If the vote is on a ruling, let's say on on some procedural matter, then the mayor or the presiding officer who's a council member cannot vote then either. So it's the same rules for whoever is presiding officer.
Right. Mayor, do you know why there is a discrepancy between the rules and the charter?
I don't. Yeah, I just don't remember. I don't remember the discussion previously. I do remember the charter saying that the same. And in fact, I was asked recently without looking at this if if somebody presiding in the absence of the mayor could vote. My answer was no. It's so my understanding of it is correct. I just don't even remember us even talking about this.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are no other questions on section five. Move on to.
Well, no, I do. Like, why wouldn't we make this section align with the charter?
Oh, I would propose to do that.
Okay.
And and I would just basically say the mayor or a counselor serving as presiding officer shall not vote on any matter. Blah, blah, blah. It's really the language you've got there, but just add in. Anybody serving as presiding officer has the same rules as the mayor. And they can be the tiebreaker if need be, as the mayor would. Yes.
There likely won't be a tie, but because there's an odd number usually in that situation. But there the appeal language, I think, is good to correct and keep in there because I I while it makes perfect sense to me that the presiding officer would not vote on their on an appeal of their own ruling. I wasn't aware of that until I read that that just now. So I wouldn't. I think it's informative to have that in there just to just correct it.
Right.
Yeah. So were you planning to do that as well?
Yes, I'll leave that in there for both the mayor and whoever serving as otherwise serving as presiding officer officer. Okay, moving on to section six on the minutes. Give you a second to read A and B there.
Can we scroll it on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I have it. I mean, I have it in hard copy, but just for the audience as well.
Yeah.
Senator Mayor, I understand that Counselor Panamara has joined us.
I saw a participant, what believe was Counselor Panamera, but when I investigated it, he got his computer in the room.
Okay, yeah. We do have a participant, but it's not Panamara. Panamara. Can't believe I did that.
It's okay. She's not here.
Yeah.
Tell her. Okay. Back to you, Dave.
So on section six, two comments. First, I did add a little more flexibility in section A for the city recorder to have a little more time to give minutes back to you. Saying that they should be presented for approval by the council at the next regular meeting or the meeting thereafter. And it just seems like we've struggled recently to get all those done by the next meeting. So I proposed that, but I don't know what the council would like to do with respect to those minutes.
I mean, I think the ORS just says in a reasonable amount of time. So that's just undefined what reasonable is. I I appreciate that you've extended it to as long as 30 days because I I I think that's fair.
Seems like that makes sense given our limitations on staff. And just a reminder, I think sometimes in the past we have asked the mayor to sign the minutes, and that's not necessary. So I just want to remind you on that.
Yeah.
The minutes do need to be approved by the council and then signed by the reporter. The mayor need not separately sign.
I haven't signed the minutes in. Does this say that the mayor asked to sign the minutes?
No, it doesn't. Just a reminder that sometimes that.
Yeah, I haven't done it in years.
Yeah. Next, section seven, if you'd look at seven A, which is mostly the same as our current council rule. But there is one one change that I'll discuss after you have a chance to look that over. Again, this is really substantively the same as the current council rules. If you look at number five on page 13 there, Counselor Panamara asked a question about, and that refers to scroll up here. That's referring to engaging in advocacy during a council meeting for against something that voter approval is being sought in an impending public election. Counselor Panamara asked, well, what about things that really are not or outside the city's purview in terms of decision making, like a state ballot measure, for example? And you may want to discuss and think think about and discuss that, whether you want to make that a little more tight so that it says something like the mayor's and accounts mayor and councilor shall not engage in advocacy during a council meeting for or against a matter for which exclusive city talent voter approval is being sought. That way, you might let's say there's an, let's say LOC is supporting a ballot measure, statewide ballot measure, and the city council wants to say, yeah, we want to sign on to agree with LOC on that. If we added this language that Eleanor was suggesting, then you could do that. Otherwise, you couldn't.
What was, sorry, Counselor Paramiller?
What was the phrasing that she suggested?
Well, she didn't ask. She didn't suggest specific phrasing, but I'm suggesting that we say shall not engage in advocacy during a council meeting for or against a measure for which exclusive city of talent voter approval is being sought. So if it were a, you know, a measure that just had to do with city talent, then you would need to stay, what you would need to do anyway. You're really required by state law to stay out of that as an official matter.
I mean, this does make me think, though, about the Tura ballot measure that was put on the ballot by this body. So would that be in conflict with this?
Well, you was put on, but it wasn't you. You weren't engaging in advocacy for or against.
In our official meetings.
Right.
Right. I mean, my my thought process is that is that we're that these meetings are for the purpose of city business. And I mean, it sometimes is the city business to advocate for something statewide that might impact our city negatively or positively.
Right.
So I do think having that flexibility is important. But yeah, I I think I appreciate the language that you're proposing for that ability.
A distinction that I'm hearing being brought up is a discussion of something to educate as opposed to advocate.
Right. Yeah, I mean, advocacy would be us sitting here saying, you know, we 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 put something on the ballot, for example, for the voters to to vote on the Torah thing. But we didn't sit here and go, we didn't sit here and say, we're putting this on the ballot, and we were recommending that residents count vote for it. Yeah. So I do think that's an important distinction.
Yeah. And and by state law, you're not allowed to to have, you know, be an advocate for as as an official to be an advocate for, let's say, a ballot measure or a particular candidate. Let's say for city council. You can, of course, as a private individual make an advocacy statement of some kind, but speaking as the council or a council member, that would be.
On behalf of the city.
Right.
Well, to me, like, just, I mean, maybe this is neither here nor there, but the language that's being proposed about, like, a state ballot measure for whatever reason, wouldn't that be a city manager's report about the potential impact of either outcomes of the vote? And not necessarily up to councils to make any decision or statement on anyway.
Unless we wanted to send in or science, you know, sign something. Yeah, or if we wanted to send in a letter on behalf of the city that, you know, the PUC raising the water rates will impact this, you know, vulnerable community, that kind of stuff. I think it is important to preserve that ability.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
And you have done that a number of times.
Yeah.
There are no other comments on on section A of section seven A. You look at section seven B on ethics. Seven B again is there's no change. That provision is in the current council rules. And I think is not controversial. But you might want to take a look at it.
Is there any value, council members, in adding a provision that suggests the council shall review updates to the ethics rules on an annual basis? Maybe in January or something like that, just because the value, I think, you know, if we want to extract value over recent recent concerns, one one value we could get out of it would be to force the city to look for updates and then have those updates come to the council in the in the form of a review. And that's what it would do is it would trigger. I don't force is the wrong word. Trigger. It would trigger a review.
I support that. I think that it just underlines our own value as a council of transparency for that to be an annual review in a public meeting.
Yep. Good, good, good input.
Okay, I will add that. And usually, usually, these changes are become effective because of state law that itself becomes effective January 1st of the year.
Yeah. Now, I just want to be clear. I don't think we need to do ethics training through the city because LOC, not LOC, excuse me, OGE C has enacted new training rules themselves.
Right.
But but an update, just a review of any updates.
Right. What's new? Right. On this, just just a reminder, and Counselor Karen Miller was asking me about this prior to the meeting. Reminder, when you have either an actual or potential conflict of interest, the time to bring it up is at the beginning of that agenda item to to announce then the nature of your conflict. And to do that, each meeting where it comes up. There's a tendency, having done it once, you might think, well, I don't need to do it at the next meeting because I already did it previous, but it really needs to happen each each time that agenda item that you have a conflict on does come up. Moving on to section C on use of electronic devices. Again, this is not much change from the current rules. But there are a few, so please take a look at 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 section C and see if you have any comments. Again, I don't think there are any substantive changes, but there are some wording provisions. Any questions or concerns there? I do have a couple of comments about by way of reminders, looking at C three. Just a reminder that with with respect to quasi judicial matters, where the question is always is there has there been any ex parte contact? That includes any electronic communications. So if if there's an ex parte, or excuse me, there's a quasi judicial matter, usually land use matter before the council, and you get an email from somebody about that, you need to report that as an ex parte contact. And then with respect to five and six regarding electronic communications devices and electronic communications generally, just a reminder that phone conversations, text messages, and social media postings regarding city business are public records. And it's really easy to kind of mix those up. And, you know, the best practice is to keep any communications segregated onto a separate phone line or a separate social media account that only has to do with city business. And of course, sometimes you'll get something on your personal phone or personal personal text that is really city business. At that point, you need to transfer it over to some form of city business communication so that there is an official record that can be kept and produced if it's if need be. And that's a pain in the neck for us for a city official. They have to think think in those boxes and to set up really separate accounts for personal versus city business. But it's really to protect you. It makes that really necessary. Otherwise, you could have somebody you know, plowing through personal communications that really isn't appropriate, but if you haven't separated them, that can happen.
If they subpoena your phone or your records.
Yes.
Right.
Or make a record even outside of the litigation context, if it's a public records request, because these are public records, even your texts.
Right.
They regard city business.
But I think it's important not to confuse that if That if somebody does a records request. They can't take. They can't subpoena your phone. They can, you have to produce the records that you have, but. They can't plow through all of your stuff. It's not the same thing.
Yeah.
They, but if they subpoena your phone or subpoena your computer through a legal action, that, that can happen.
Well, even. They, your, let's say your texts, because that's the most, almost the most difficult one. If. If they make a records request for your. Texts regarding some piece of city business. You, you may. You may have to produce those.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying the distinction is with the records request, you would be providing it, whereas with a subpoena, a third party would be extracting it.
And going through everything on your phone rather than just the records that are pertinent.
Right.
Yeah.
But it, it could even happen that. In a records request. The response is, I don't have any texts regarding city business. And the person requesting it happens to have seen one, and then they say, well. The district attorney needs to look at your records because we know that there are some. That had some of your texts. And you claim were just personal. Regarding, regarding city business. So it's even possible there. It's less likely. Because it, the. It involves getting the district attorney involved in it as opposed to a litigation.
I just want to make it clear that I'm not trying to confuse those issues and that, you know, I mean. Yes, you're setting aside texts or being able to access texts for a records request. Is what we always need to be able to do.
Yes.
I, but I did have somebody ask me one time, if they do a records request, you have to hand over your phone and it's, I, I don't, I don't want to conflate those two issues.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Towards bottom of the page fourteen. Section D on confidentiality, if you want to take a. Quick look at that. Again, no change there. And I don't think there's anything controversial, but please take a look. If there's no, if there are no. Questions or comments there, I just, again, have a couple. Reminders. On subsection three down near the top of page fifteen. We've had an executive session. And afterwards, a reporter comes up and asks something about the executive session. And. You were to inadvertently reveal something about it, that opens up. The session for the reporter to ask. More questions. So. And it's easy to fall into the trap of responding. To a good question from a reporter. Who's not trying to trick anybody, but you can inadvertently. Get in that kind of situation. And then looking at section. Four, just a reminder that executive session material. Is remains confidential and you're bound not to reveal it even after you're no longer a counselor. Okay, no. Comments or questions on that? Moving on to interactions. With staff and attorney, section E. This is, this is a, a new section. It's based on the LOC's model council rules. So you may want to look at it and see if you. Feel that's what you want to adopt. You just look at. Section E one for now. Probably had a chance to review that. I don't think there's anything particularly. Difficult in there or. You'd find disagreeable, but. No comments?
I just have a quick question. So for. C. Two. I, I. My question is, the mayor and members of the council shall normally share with the entire council information. Obtained from staff about city business. How would that, how would we go about that? I mean, would that be like if? One counselor asked a question and then. It was substantive to a future council. Decision, then it would just be something that. Everyone would need to know about at some point, or like, we're talking about like forwarding emails, that seems weird. Do you know?
Last, what was the last?
I'm just trying to imagine how this would. How this would go. The mayor and members of the council shall share the entire council with the entire council information obtained. From staff about city business. So like, what would that look like?
Well, the. Let me step back and say the, the purpose is to make sure that there's not. One member of the council who has specialized knowledge that the rest of the council doesn't have. So that you're all making decisions based on the same. Knowledge level. So that's what we're trying to, trying to get at with this provision.
So it would be like something that Gary would have in a staff report and, or. If the mayor had a conversation with Gary and it was pertinent information, we would just make sure that everybody. Was on that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of an individual, if, if it's not something that's gone through the city manager, then it's kind of an individual obligation. On the part of a. Member of the council to say, well, I talked with staff about that and here's what I learned from that conversation, just so everybody knows before we make a decision.
Does that break quorum?
How would you do that?
Does that create like a daisy chain quorum effect of discussion about the topic?
Not if you're in a council.
What I'm talking about, do, making sure that everybody knows either in a council meeting, it could be in, in a memo to everybody, but. You, you would not. You would not want to be in a position, that's a good point you're making. You would not want to be in a position of having had a conversation with Gary about some particular question that you wanted an answer to, for instance, mayor. And then you talk to. You know, three other. Members, you're getting, you know, you're getting close to, if you talk to four other members, you gotta.
Yeah. Well, I'm even thinking about the fact that we like, don't reply all to emails so that we don't create a collective email discussion.
Yes, it's a good point, because that's, that's the other. Sort of. Scenario I was about to get to, if. You can have a daisy chain kind of discussion that actually turns into a public meeting, even if. If it's the mayor talking. To you. And you, Counselor Panamera. And then you, Counselor Panamera, I've talked to Counselor Rider. You're, you're getting close to a daisy chain. Quorum at that point.
So I guess to Counselor Perry Miller's question. It would make sense then that part of the process would be if a question is asked about city business by one counselor, the response from the city attorney would be. To every counselor, to the whole council.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like almost more of like a staff kind of function rather than like. Or like if I was going to send them emails, everyone, I would say what you always say, do not reply all. If this is pertinent, everyone just as a reminder, don't reply all, this is just information. Is that kind of? What you're agreeing with this?
To me, this, that's my hit as well as if this is really a staff concern more than it is. A council rule. So, I mean. It seems like it would be a, a policy for the staff. Yeah, first of all, they shouldn't be having. You know, staff should, I think you address it earlier when you talk about not interfering with. Staff operations. And because we're talking, when you say. The mayor and members of the council shall normally share with the entire council information obtained by staff, you're not just talking about the city manager.
Right.
You're talking about staff, but. Up further. Is information that says. I'm looking for it. You know, you're respecting the separation. And not interfering with day to day administration, which is the responsibility, refraining from actions that would undermine the authority. Where is it?
Limiting individual.
Well, the first sentence of C, I think, is.
Oh, yeah, there it is, limiting individual inquiries and requests for information from staff. Like, it just seems redundant. I mean, I don't care that it's there, but it doesn't seem necessary. It seems like a, it seems like a city manager function more than anything else. Making sure the staff understands what their limitations are, working with individual council members and things like that. That just seems like an internal matter. I just can't think of an example where this. This, this should be a council rule.
It seems like it would be the responsibility of the person that has the information to share that with everyone than of the person. That received the information.
Well, I think this is trying to say it's really, it is both. It is a staff responsible. Let, let's say you, the mayor. Were talking to Nick about a. A land use issue. If it's just. They didn't, you know, when are we going to have our next meeting or is our next meeting going to cover this topic? That's what's addressed in the first sentence under C, which is just kind of day to day stuff. That's not something that needs to be shared. But if you're. Seeking. His interpretation, Nick's interpretation of. A particular rule. That's something that the rest of the. Council ought to know about before they address that issue. Nick should have a responsibility to bring that to the council's attention. But if that were not to happen, I think you would also have a responsibility.
Yeah.
On both sides.
For me, and I think we've talked about this a lot. As count, maybe not so much with Daniel, but. From my view. Like, I would never go to Nick and talk to him about a land use issue. I would go to the city manager if I had questions and. So. To me, the, the rule for us is just what's in C. And, and the rest of it just seems redundant. I mean, just seems unnecessary and really not. Not in. You know, not in compliance with. Really the, the first paragraph in the first place. So to me, if you're, if you're. If you're having discussions. That would trigger rule number two, then you're, you're sort of out of compliance with the whole rule. Altogether, it just, it just seems that way to me, but.
So would you like to see changes to this?
Would it, I mean, could we just strike that? That little section? I mean, I don't have an issue with the one before it that says questions from the mayor or individual members of the council. Requiring significant time or resources shall normally require approval. I mean, we're. That feels reasonable. I just don't. I don't know about that second one. I mean, Gary, does that seem like? Something that's.
We're going to see two.
I mean, I'm struggling also to think of a, a scenario where I would. Forward an email to all of council or.
Yeah, I think my biggest challenge with two is that on some level, it sort of encourages inappropriate communication. Or it's, it's, it implies that there are certain circumstances where it's okay to have those conversations. And I think, based on, I don't know, 20 years serving the city. I just feel like holding that line. Of. Council and mayor. Getting their information through the city manager's office is important. I've seen it. When. That's been lax and it's horrible. And I've seen it where it hasn't been lax and it works really, really well. But it does bring up another question, and I'll wait till we get done with this. Well, actually, it might be hard, partly important. I think that it should be somewhere in the rules if it's not already. What you said. Counselor Perry Miller, where. When a. Staff member does ask a question, that requires an answer to the entire, that requires an answer from the city manager or the. City attorney, that those answers should come to the council and be. Be provided for the whole council. If it's on a matter that is before the council. I have seen that work both ways as well, where some, some had information. So that, to me, that's the more germane rule is if there is, or if there are questions that are. On matters before the council that the answers are presented to the entire council.
It seems to me that. C two. I've really never seen it written this way. I, I'm used to a policy where. The city, the city staff. Through the manager is required to inform all members of the council equally. On. Information that may be pertinent, pertinent to a decision. Of the council upcoming. I haven't seen it where. Council members inform each other. Of information that they've received.
Yeah.
I like that. I like the way you described that. That feels more comfortable, especially if we're worried about issues with quorum and sharing of information. I don't know if it should be rephrased or if it.
Well, I, I think it gets to where you were going. Mayor, that it's really a responsibility of staff.
Yeah.
To do that, and that, I'm not sure that that has a place. In the council rules.
For me, it's an internal policy. That's what I was saying earlier.
Maybe something that there's an expectation. That that would occur.
Yeah. A standard.
Yeah.
So, what I'm hearing, I'm sorry, I was just gonna. I agree with that. I think it should, some version of this should be in the council rules, just so like that standard is set, knowing. Having the rule that how the counselors communicate to which staff. The policy being that if there's pertinent information, the staff communicates it back equally. But, um. Yeah, some version of this needs to be in the council rules that sets that standard.
I mean, I would be more, I, I think it would be more informative, like the idea here is to just really be informative and not, and, and not have misunderstandings. And to me, I think that a misunderstanding could be derived from. Where maybe if it said something like, in general, communication should be channeled through the city manager's office, both from staff or, or, you know, just a general suggestion of some kind. Because it just works best.
And I think, I think we've got elsewhere. I can't remember where, but I. In these council rules. in these council rules that and then maybe it's not there, but maybe it's someplace else where if a council member comes to a staff member, let's say to, to Nick on a, on a planning matter, Nick's obligation is to let the city manager know. And, and then that makes changing this first sentence of C two to be kind of what Gary is suggesting and you, Mayor, are suggesting sort of fits in. And it's the city manager's responsibility to make sure that the rest of the council has pertinent information for both community decisions. So I will propose some language to, to, to do that, changing that first sentence. I still think the, the second sentence of C two, well, it, that's I, I think, I, I still think is relevant. That's addressed also in the coming section on, on conversations with the city attorney, but there are some things that are not kind of like full council business, you know, what, what's my responsibility, for example, in conflicts of interest? That's not something that the whole council needs to hear about, but it may be something that you want some guidance from the city manager or the city attorney on. So I think that second sentence is still uh, useful.
I do too, but I think it could be clarified a little bit. At, or, yeah, the provision however it's not, so like questions by the mayor. No, I think actually that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll change the first sentence to reflect this information flowing through the city manager to the rest of the council on reporting.
And on that note, I, I would hope that we could have, we could see a policy written, an internal policy, because it has, it, there, I, I could cite some examples of times where where over 20, over a 20-year period where staff, staff members have stepped outside of their, their line of communication and really undermine I, this, the city operations and undermined the kind of the representative operations as well. And I think it would, i- it's time that, that is given some kind of address.
Okay. And then section E two, uh, about communications with the city attorney specifically. I uh, this is a fairly significant revision of the current somewhat similar provision in the, in the the council rules. But I don't, I, I don't see anything controversial in there, but you may want to look at that and see what you think.
Before we move on, I had a second thought, um, and I apologize, um, because I'm the one that's dragging us back. Um, I just want to clarify, I, I think what I, what I'm suggesting is not a rule against those communications, but, um, but a, or a policy that against those kinds of communications as much as a policy that, that there's an upline in the staff communications as well. Like if, if it's good enough to be talking to the community, it should be good enough to be talking to the city manager, not the community, the, the officials. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, I just want to make sure that that's clear. Um, that it's really just about trying to redirect communications through this, through the appropriate channels. That's what I'm trying to state. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead and.
Yeah, and certainly that's, that's part of what enables the city manager to be effective, knowing, uh, you know, hearing from staff, what conversations with a particular counselor might be. So the city manager really needs to know that and, and making that explicit, I think would be useful.
Okay, I'm sorry, Gary. I mean, Dave, what, what were you saying?
Okay, we're on E two that with concerning interactions with the city attorney. And again, I don't think there's anything controversial there, but please take a look at that. And if you look at three as well, that's new. Towards the middle of, of page 16.
Those three also. Would you go to the presenter themselves, the staff presenter, or would you go to the city manager? If you had sort of along the lines of that previous conversation, but.
Good point. I think consistent with what we just said. Probably.
Which one are we talking about?
Number
Three?
Three. Uh, concerning questions that you might have about something in the agenda packet. The, the effort there was to try to encourage council members, if you've got questions or concerns about a particular agenda item, it sure helps staff to be advised of that in advance so that you can get good answers to your questions. Like Counselor Greider is pointing out that we've just been talking about uh, having those kinds of questions flow through the city manager, potentially city attorney too, but I, I, I think what you're suggesting, Counselor Greider, is, is striking. Uh, should advise relevant staff members, presenters. The idea would be instead advise the city manager.
Cause I, and I would assume, Dave, it's gone through you to get to the agenda now or the packet. So.
Or through the city manager.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the city manager.
Sorry, I was looking.
Yeah.
So I think consistently, you're suggesting we should strike the words relevant staff presenter and the word city attorney, not just go through with city manager.
In light of the fact that they also build the agenda, I, I think that they're in control of the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, or of making the agenda. I think that's a good, that's good input. Yeah. Because the city, the city manager would then, if there's questions for you, would bring them to you. That would be their purview to do. Okay. Yeah. I agree with that.
So I'll make those changes. Are there any other comments on that?
I do have a comment for section B. Um, so that language, if we could scroll back up really quick to the whole paragraph. Um, this, this, this guy's a little hard to read. Um, section B of the, I'm sorry, of the one we were just talking about, it was paragraph B. Yeah, requests of the city attorney for legal advice may be, um, so may be made by the mayor or a member of the city council during a city council meeting. As long as the request is relevant to the matter of the city business under the council discussion. If the city attorney is not present, such a request may be conveyed to the city attorney by the city manager. I don't think the mayor should be part of that.
Okay.
But uh, both the requests, I do think it's important that both the request and the resulting legal advice be presented to the entire, yeah.
So just take that mayor.
Just the, yeah, just the, uh, screw the auspices of the mayor. I don't think that's their purview and.
Yeah.
Um,
Right.
And I just think it could, it could result in miscommunication.
The only other thing I'd say on that section on the city attorney is, is, uh, in two A, that's really in there mostly to remind the public that the city attorney can't give legal advice to members of the public. That's, and, and that's, that's difficult concept for people sometimes to appreciate. That a, a city attorney can give advice to the council as representatives of the public. But I have to not respond to requests for
Representation.
Legal, not only representation, but legal opinions. If you ask me for, if the council asks me for a legal opinion, of course I give that. But a member of the public doesn't have the ability to use my time that way.
Yeah. And neither do individual council members.
Right.
Right. One thing I, I want to propose is both the request and the resulting legal advice shall be made available to the entire council. Where that came from originally was that, um, sometimes when the city manager was conveying a question that the council was making of the city attorney. Now, obviously, we had a city attorney that was out of the city previously. But that came from the fact that oftentimes the question wasn't asked in the way that the council asked him. So we were getting, we were getting missing misinformation, right? Because the question wasn't correct in the first place. And, um, I really feel like that it's better, it's more clear to say both the written question and the resulting legal advice shall be made available. And then, and that just requires the city manager to take the question off the record and present it in an email so that we make sure that the right question was asked in the first place. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I have total faith in, in the current city manager's ability to write, ask the right questions, but it hasn't always been the case that that uh, that we've had kind of clear communication. So I, I'd like to see that as the written question.
So just make sure I understand. So the, I think the idea is the, the, uh, let's say a council member asks for a legal, uh, legal opinion. And, um,
Well, I think this is only in the case if the council is asking for an opinion.
Right.
Something and the city attorney is not there. Um, so the only time we would ever get this is if he were, if the city attorney was not available, the city manager was conveying the question to the city attorney. And then, so this requires them to bring back not just the answer, but also the question.
Right.
I think it should be in writing.
Right. So like as in a typical legal opinion, question presented.
Right.
That, and then you articulate what that question is. So if there is a misunderstanding.
Right.
It'd be, you can make that clear.
It's amazing how the question just varied a little bit can have a completely different outcome. And I would change the request to the question.
Right. Got it. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Um, moving on.
I feel like this is going to be a bit of a discussion as an section.
The next section, well, it's also six.
Yes, and it's six. It's my follow-up to that.
What is the next one?
Social media and social media guidelines.
Oh.
Which is a new provision.
Yeah, which is why I think it's going to be a big discussion since we're laying a foundation.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we need to save this for the next study session because Tora was supposed to start five minutes ago.
Yep, sounds right. Thank you for that, Counselor Byers.
So if, if, if it makes sense, when I, I don't think that's a, going to be an hour-long discussion. It may be more extensive than our other sections. But I think what I'll try to do is bring that back to you as well as the whole package for your review at that point.
That makes sense.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor, can we have a quick break?
Yeah, so with that, the meeting is adjourned and we'll take a five-minute break before we start the, so we'll start the Torah meeting at 6:10.